Hi, good evening. This will be the October 9th, 2018 Select Board Meeting. And we're going to call it order now. We're going to start with announcements. The first announcement will be early voting. I don't know if John can see this. October 22nd, 23rd, 25th, 29th, 30th, or November 1st. The other announcement I have is Flu Clinic will be Thursday, I believe, 1:00. Anybody over 21 that has a medical card can come in for a flu shot. And that's at the COA, I believe. Before I get to your announcements, do you guys have any announcements?
Well, this Saturday, the 13th, is homecoming at Smith Academy. So parade starts, I believe, at 9:00. Float contest at 8:30. And then there's soccer and field hockey games throughout the morning and early afternoon. So hopefully, a lot of people will be able to come down.
Also, bonfires on the 13th, too. I forgot to mention that. Fire department's sponsoring that.
Yeah, I have one announcement. I just wanted to try something new on Friday, October 12th, 1700 to 1900. I'm going to come in. I just want to have some open hours if anybody has any concerns or they have something positive they want to say, or ideas or anything like that. I just want to have some open hours where people can come in because a lot of times I get stopped on the street. And I say, why don't you come to the meeting and do that? And people don't want to be on TV or whatever. So I figured I'd try having some open hours here. So I'll try it at 1700 to 1900 on Friday this week here.
Okay. Under announcements, you're all set? Okay, you're all set?
Yes.
Under announcements, you want to have the police chief come up? And we haven't gotten a public forum yet. Do you?
Hi.
Hi, Mike.
So I was asked to give a quick update on the department or some things that we're doing. So we have two programs that we just initiated. One is called the Safe Entry Program. So it's a lockbox program that we put on homes for elderly folks or anybody, really, that, you know, lives alone. And that may be, they might not be able to get to the door in case of an emergency or something like that if, for some reason, they're ill or they have some type of a condition. The lockboxes are just, are placed outside their home and it gives all, any first responder going to that, the ability to quickly grab a key and get into their home to help them. So we don't have to kick their doors in or anything like that. So that's, that's really it in a nutshell when it comes to that. Truthfully, I don't have a lot to do with it. Clint has spearheaded this. He's kind of taken this whole thing over him and Bob Flaherty and Jane, really. They're, they're gathering all the information and stuff like that. And Clint is doing the installs for the most part. Him and Bob Flaherty do the installs with that. So they're doing a great job. I initially ordered 80 of those. And I think he's gone through 11 already, just in the last week and a half. So it seems to be taking off well. The other thing...
No, if I may, just so the people know, should they just call the police department and go through...
The police department or Jane.
Or Jane.
Yep, Jane has the...
In the COA.
Yep, COA, she has, she has the forms as well.
Yep, and the boxes are free?
The boxes are free, yep. We don't charge anything for those boxes. The, the boxes cost $21 and something apiece, but I foot the bill for that out of donation. So I bought 40 of those initially to start with. It's just a good program.
Yeah, it's awesome. Thank you.
And we have another free program. It's, it's Medic Alert. Everyone's heard of the Medic Alert jewelry and bracelets. We're doing that free as well through Medic Alert is offering this program when, when, if they, if a police department sponsors it. So that's what we did. We signed on and sponsored this. So this program's really for people with Alzheimer's, you know, people who might wander. So, and it could be of any age. It could even be children or, or something at risk, people who are at risk of wandering or, you know, getting lost, something like that. The Medic Alert jewelry is free to them. What we do is we sign them up in the program. And we have access to a portal. So we have their picture, their information in there, where they live, contact information, so on and so forth. And any police officer that's part of this, anywhere in the country, can look up those numbers and it brings that data up to safely get people home. And that's also free of charge. It's a, it's a, just another great community program, so. And then our cruisers end up next week, is what I'm being told. So there was a bit of a debacle with the last company that was upfitting them. They had, I believe, 40 cruisers on the lot, from what I was told, and they were backed up over six months. Some, I don't know what happened, but something happened and they were unable to get to them. So a new company has come in that does all the Border Patrol vehicles and stuff like that. And they're going to have them ready by the end of next week. So that's where we are with the cruisers. Other than that, everything else seems to be running fine. No issues.
Well, thank you for the update. I appreciate it. Again, if anybody has any questions or concern, they can contact the chief.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Appreciate the update. Thank you.
Okay. The last announcement I have is tax bills are due November 1st. So make sure you get your tax bills paid. We'll move to public forum next. Again, we don't respond to anything from public forums. So anybody here for public forum? Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that I'm here tonight to complain, to submit a complaint, go to meeting laws, talk with my lady this afternoon, and it's regarding emergency management in the last meeting that was held. And it was never posted, so we didn't have a chance to even be here or whatever the case be. But anyway, I've got a formal complaint that I'd like to leave to the chairman because that's what the law says. And it'll be a copy submitted to the town clerk tomorrow. And we'll go from there.
That's fine.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Anybody else here for public forum? Okay, the next thing on the topic will be our posted, our approval of minutes for 4-9 2018.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And 4-19 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion. I got a second. Any discussion?
No.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Okay. Okay, posted business. We'll have a presentation from Dave Prickett on our wastewater master plan report. So Dave, come on up here and...
I've got a handout. If it's okay to distribute it to the board?
Sure, fine.
There's extra copies for the public if anybody's interested.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was others in the packet, but there's only two listed on the agenda itself.
Oh, okay. Does anybody want a copy of that? You ready?
Go, go forward, Dave.
All right, wastewater crash course.
It's all yours.
I understand there might be a pretty important ballgame tonight, so we'll keep things moving along for the group.
It would be important.
For those of you that, that haven't met me, and I've had a chance to know some of you and met, met some of you this evening, I'm Dave Prickett with DPC Engineering. I've been doing wastewater work with the town of Hatfield back to 2001. Over the last couple of years, though, more importantly, we've been working on a wastewater master plan for Hatfield. I'm going to give you a quick background, kind of talk about where we're at. I'll preface this by saying tonight is kind of the crash course to get some momentum moving. And then what I hope would happen is that with, with Phil and Eric and other, other members of your staff will have opportunities to kind of do this in workshop format and keep things moving and progressing.
Can you just introduce Eric? Because I don't think he's, he's our new wastewater management director and...
My name is Eric Mills. I took over for Brian McGrath at the wastewater plant and the new superintendent. So I'm eight months in and I'm, I'm trying to get, get into it as much as I can, so it...
And he even does the weed whacking up there.
Oh, yeah. I don't mind, I don't mind the physical work either.
He's being modest, yeah.
So, yeah.
So just by way of background, tonight, we're going to cover the wastewater management or the wastewater master plan, talk a little bit about the state II requirements that have been kind of tabled, and talk about a grant opportunity that presented itself that we need some action on relative to, to the town and appropriation, et cetera. So on the wastewater master plan, and please feel free to interject as you have questions and move along. The goal is basically to look at your collection system and your treatment plant, what are your current and future needs, and what's going to be the plan over the next 20-year period. That's what a wastewater master plan is comprised of. The goal is to develop recommendations and an implementation plan that's, that's clear that we can communicate with the public. And ultimately, you can actually go implement and seek their approval for any capital projects that come from it. When we did this project and started it about a year and a half ago, we had a pretty good sense as to what was going to come for the major items. But as things have unfolded now with our second operator and some new faces on the Board of Selectmen, here's where we're at. You have a treatment plant that was built 35 years ago. The buildings at a treatment plant typically last about 50 years, but all the mechanical equipment that's inside it generally has a life expectancy of 20 years. So 35 minus 20, you're into some borrowed time, as I would describe it. A lot of the stuff's long in the tooth, obsolete in some cases, not super efficient in others, some emerging things relative to the headworks that are safety concerns. And it's time to renew that asset or consider the plan as to how you would do so. The major things at the plant that, that need the most attention are the disinfection system. You currently use chlorine gas for disinfection. It's a pretty outdated technology. As you can imagine with chlorine gas, it's also a potential safety hazard for the operators. So one of the things we're looking at is replacing that with ultraviolet UV disinfection, which those of you that may have swimming pools and water filtration systems in your home, pretty common technologies nowadays, so modernization. On the headworks or on the incoming side of the treatment plant, you do have some screening and grit removal, although the grit removal system has basically fallen off the side of the building. It's pretty dilapidated. You also have those two systems in reverse order. What's changed over the last decade is the flushables that you may have read in the newspapers and other communities. Some, some pretty nasty stuff gets flushed down the toilets that didn't 10 years ago. And it's just a product of resources and things that people use that are now available in terms of wipes, et cetera. Guess where they make their way? To this guy's house 40 hours a week. So it becomes quite a problem relative to getting clogged in pumps within the treatment system. So it's generally one of the major needs in terms of all the treatment plants we look at. The solids, the sludge that you have coming out the backside of the treatment plant after the, the process is, is performed, those are out, out of date. Those generally don't result in the most efficient way of getting rid of the solids, and they end up costing you more money in operating costs. So when you look at your budget and you talk about that each fall going into the spring and you set your wastewater budget, sludge is the number two line item after labor. So that's generally where we look to try to make up some OLM costs. I should apologize to those that are having dinner at home watching this program. For me, this is second nature, talking about wastewater during life. But I apologize for anything that's objectionable during this time. On your collection system or your sewers, I guess I would describe it by saying you have a really big sewer system for the number of customers. You know, it's pretty spread out across the town of Hatfield. So anytime you have a lot of pipe for the number of customers that you have and nine pump stations, you can imagine you have more assets per customer to, to manage than a lot of utilities do. So collection system, I'd say in general, you've done a pretty good job keeping up with it. You did some repairs and replacement a few years ago. You just have some pump stations with old, tired equipment in it. So it's just, it's time to replace those pumps with things that are more energy efficient, operator friendly, et cetera. So that's kind of it on background and what the major issues are at the plant. This is where the rubber meets the road in the coming sections here. So when we try to start getting consensus and buy-in from the public on what the issues are and what it's going to cost to replace it, I think it's important to understand what would it cost if we didn't have a treatment plan and we had to build one from the ground up? You're looking at probably $20 to $30 million to construct what you have today. It's public construction, prevailing wage laws, filed sub bids. It's a major asset. That's good and it's bad. It's bad when it gets old and you have to fix it, right? Just like schools, fire, ambulance, everything else. Everything has a renewal cost. So right now, what we did was we started with Eric when he came on board and Brian before him, is we took a look, okay, we had a list. We had an initial list. And the initial wish list is always more than the budget allows, right? So we started off with 13-plus million dollars in wastewater capital just for the treatment plant. We all acknowledged that that was going to be a nonstarter as we look at what that would do to rates, what that would do to taxes, et cetera. So we charted to, I guess I'd describe it as peel the onion. When you peel the onion, you get to the center, everybody cries in the process. And that's, that's what we tried to do with, with Eric and his staff. We ended up getting down to a leaner number in the range of 6 to 9 million. And I say that because one thing that we haven't yet had a chance to discuss is the potential for phasing and trying to do things over a slightly longer period of time instead of just one project. And that may allow us to balance things between needs and the budget. So round numbers, that's where we're at. You have an old plant, you have significant capital needs, but we don't necessarily have a, the shot clock hasn't expired. We still have time to make these decisions together as a group with the public and do what's right for Hatfield. So that's where that project's at. Next steps, action items on that project. First and foremost, I, I wanted to get this dialogue going with the selectmen, with your staff, with finance, with the town manager, and try to work towards a good understanding, at least of what the issues are and what the alternatives are so that the three of you as representatives of the town can make informed decisions. And that's, that's the primary goal. The second one, and this is something that's emerged more recently, is USDA through Rural Development announced about two months ago that they had presented 15 billion in available funds for water wastewater projects in the U.S. This had come out after a long two-and-a-half-year dry spell for those funds. That program allows up to 45% grant in long-term, low-interest loans. It's about as ideal and potentially the only major grant source available for a project of this magnitude. So that's definitely something that we should discuss and explore, potentially put in an application on your behalf so that if and when you decide it's appropriate to go to the residents and ask for an appropriation, there's a carrot there, hopefully in the form of a major grant to help subsidize the project. I'm going to come up for air. I feel like a hockey announcer here. That's kind of, that's the big project. That's where we want to start it, a couple of little things. But I don't know if the, if the selectmen have any questions yet or if you want to try to hammer through wastewater.
I have a couple of questions.
I love questions, yeah.
Okay. I'm looking at what the preliminary recommendations are. And I didn't read the rest of it because I'm filling in on you. But is there anything in here that considers expansion at all? Are we getting, where are we percentage-wise?
So, well, that's, that's a, that, that question has a two-part answer. So on paper, you have a lot of capacity for growth. So you have a, a permit that allows you to convey X flow. And right now, you're only like roughly, you know, less than half of that, a third. So you have tons of capacity on paper. I should probably let Eric speak to the realities that not necessarily are things on the ground equal to what's on paper. But you have a robust asset. You have room for growth in your system over time, smart growth. And I think that's a luxury that a lot of my other clients don't have because they have treatment plants that are tapped out on capacity. So first question a developer asks when he or she talks about developing a parcel is, what do I have for a wastewater connection? Followed by water. But, you know, that's, to answer your question, it's kind of, it's kind of tricky, but do you, I don't know if you...
I think the main part of that is, is we have to fix the plant and get it up to date before we try to expand. Simple fact, especially in the collection system, heavy rains such, we get inundated with water down there, sometimes doubling our flow. So that limits our capacity. We fix some of the stations, some of the lines, some of the stuff that's in this project, then the potential for expansion is definitely there, so. But I think that's your first step.
How would we get more money on what the cost would be if we were able to get one of these grants? Was through the grant, we did apply first and they would tell us or...
Yeah, so the way USDA works is it's, it's a continuous cycle. There's no annual deadline. You'd submit an application. It's pretty cumbersome if you've been through it before for other town resources, but they'll give you a preliminary commitment after you submit the application. Okay, Hatfield, I think that we can come up with the seven and a half million you think you need, and you're looking at a 30% grant. It starts to tell you what's my net loan amount going to be. Before they'll give you a firm commitment with a signature, you have to get an appropriation. So it's like that with almost any funding grant program that's out there is they'll give you a soft commitment, but before they'll give you a, a hard commitment, they're going to want to see that, that you've made that investment and that the residents are serious about the project. Because otherwise, they're giving you money that they could give to, to somebody else. But it's, it's really, you know, you built your treatment plant 10 cents on the dollar 40 years ago. That program is, is long gone. It was pretty amazing what came out of the mid-'70s through the early-'80s with that funding program. But now you're looking at best case, generally 45% grant for a project like that.
So that, should the town put in for the application, then go to the towns' folks to see if they want it or how does...
I would. I mean, I don't know how many bullets I can take up there at town meeting floor with you, but generally speaking, if you have a carrot to offer the residents, you know, hey, this isn't ideal. No one wants to spend this kind of money. But as Eric said, we've kicked the can to the point where we can't kick it a lot further. You know, this is the best balanced program. To Cindy's point, the more customers you have, the better you're able to spread that debt out across a larger user base. So, you know, some growth over time, when you can grow your customer base, always good. But you've generally done that.
You did mention it's, the plant is 35 years old and it was actually designed for 20 years, right?
Well, no, the plant was designed for, the buildings are generally good for 50 years, but all the mechanical equipment, you can imagine things at home that you've replaced much sooner frequency than 20 years, put them in a wastewater environment, and it requires a tremendous amount of attention. I think what you're experiencing now that I've heard from Eric and before him, Brian, is we're starting to replace more and more equipment each year on an emergency basis. That's challenging from a budgeting standpoint, mid-cycle. I mean, nobody wants to raise sewer rates, but if you know what your debt service is going to be over time, at least you have stability.
What's the cost of putting in the application?
You're probably looking at $10,000 to $15,000 of the cost. You have to do a preliminary engineering report, an environmental report, and a, I'll call it an underwriting-type application. It's a three-part thing. It's a good three-to-four-inch stack of paper. It's one of the more robust. It's not a nice little five-page, you know, home energy audit application or something. It's a, it's robust, but you know, the, the reward justifies the level of effort. Some, some communities we've worked with, we've done it in a teaming arrangement that the town's done a lot of the legwork to track things down, and that helps keep costs down. But it's a good, good or magnitude. So this is the easy one from the timeline standpoint. I think the sense of urgency Eric feels it every day. I see, I feel it once a month when we go visit him. But, you know, it's, it's not something that we can probably defer forever. It's on the forefront, and, and there's some good momentum. We don't want to, we don't want to lose it from this project.
We've really been having to overhaul a lot of equipment. Like, pretty much, you're getting a brand-new piece of equipment when we're done. But like he said, it's in an emergency envi, or, you know, in emergency time. So it ends up in costing you more than something that, if you planned for. So, and it's been quite frequently lately, so.
So let's come back to like, you know, combining the action items on that one. I'm sorry.
Just one other question. And you may have touched on this. I could, I missed it. But on, under Sec C, Part 2, the collection system, you know, familiar with the nine pumping stations? And like you said, that, that's a lot. That's an issue when the power goes out.
Yep.
That kind of thing. Now, is, is that going to be changed at all with this plan? It says to be determined. So is that like part of the thought process at all? Or do we need those nine, all nine of those?
No, you, you need your pump stations. I think two of them are newer. They're the ones that were connected to the Route 510 sewer project. Those are in pretty good shape over on Dwight Bridge. The other seven are all at least 20 years old, but they have the capacities you need. So you're just looking at replacing pumps, controls, modernization. I mean, in the grand scheme of what we're talking about, it's peanuts compared to the treatment plant. On the TBD side, that relates more to what might come out of the pipes themselves. So we hadn't quite gotten to it on the agenda, but we did have to postpone part of the state II requirements until a time when it worked for the, the funding and finance within the community. And what will come out of that second phase is likely a list of things that you'll need to do to pipes to tighten them up so they're not as leaky. So they don't have offset joints and things like that that cause grease backups or backups into homes. That's going to be more of a annual program, a longer term, that you'd allocate a little bit of money each year to fixing pipes and tightening things up. And I think you're familiar with that approach based on my experience over the last 15 years with Hatfield, that you've been very proactive with pipes. So everybody hanging in there all right? That's, that's the big one to take in. The other two items on the second page of the, the handout, Mass DEP Energy Efficiency Grant Program. So Mass DEP started last fall a call for projects at water wastewater treatment plants that they could provide funds to help you replace things by you demonstrating that those projects could decrease electrical consumption. So the goal was pretty clear, like they are with a lot of state projects. You know, let's get rid of old, really power-intensive things and try to make them energy-intensive. And Hatfield already has a great reputation of being power and energy-conscious. So we, we applied for that grant. You guys really had a home run project. Right now, you've got a big blower that keeps your sludge aerated in an old tank, and that's your biggest energy sink at that plant. So what we did was we submitted an application to retrofit that old tank with something called a gravity thickener. They would run with like two horsepower drive continuously as opposed to a big, big blower all the time. And they came back and awarded you the maximum grant, which was $200,000 per community. Now, you have a project, an initial piece of that project, that 6 to 9 million dollar project, that's $480,000. You've got a $200,000 grant tied to it. Where we're at right now is DEP has given you the award. They're asking that the projects be completed by June 30th, 2019. As we all know in the municipal world, that's a pretty tight turnaround. They're trying to stay on their fiscal year thing. But the decision before us is, is it possible to very quickly try to get towards a special town meeting or some method of appropriating the project costs? Again, 480,000 with the caveat that you've got a $200,000 grant. But ideally, we really need to be out to bid in the next, you know, six to eight weeks so we can get a contractor on board through procurement and then physically build that in the spring. I'm sure DEP would have a little leniency going into next summer, but we have to try to make a good faith effort. Or in the worst-case scenario, if this doesn't work for Hatfield, we have to go back on your behalf and tell them that this isn't going to work for the community. I'd really hate to do that because, you know, even though it's 480,000, that's a 42% grant on one little piece right there. It's pretty, you know.
Good chunk.
As things go, I, I don't want to, I don't want to turn something down if, if we don't have to. Plus, it's going to save you energy costs on your budget, which you can certainly backfill with everything else that you've been doing right now.
So the 200,000 is in addition to the 480?
Nope, that's part of the 480.
It is part of the 480.
Yeah, so the 200...
So then we don't need to appropriate 480 or the 200 is a reimbursable grant?
I think that you all are much smarter than I relative to appropriation requirements. But as I understand it, even if we get a 99% grant, we'd have to appropriate the full 480.
Okay.
And I think the article would just read that subject input from council and everything else that, you know, 200,000's coming from a grant. Your only cash flow issue is that you have to dole out the 480, and then you're reimbursed at the conclusion of the project for the $200,000 grant.
Right, that's what I was...
So there may be some short-term financing challenges.
Thank you.
Good question. So I say that's easier, but that's, the shot clock's ticking on that one. So that's definitely, you know, waiting until annual town meeting next spring would be too late relative to that program, and I would hate to turn that money back on your behalf if we don't have to.
It's gonna be a tough one to do that.
Right. So you don't need to make any action on that tonight, but time is of the essence for sure. No pressure. And then the last item that we had on the list for wastewater 101 tonight was the state II requirements. We've kinda come at this out of order a little bit, which is great. We had received an extension from December 2017 to December 2018 for Hatfield to comply with the state II requirements. You are not alone that many of our clients have had challenges with an unfunded mandate in trying to get things lined up in a timely manner. Where we're at right now is my understanding is we had to defer that at spring town meeting to a later date, that potential article for the Phase II II work. So that's also an item of consideration. So you can see these, these potential discussion items merging that if you do have the ability to, I don't know whether you have a special town meeting in the fall typically, or if that's an option, you could potentially combine a few action items. So in theory, if you did have to do it, maybe you can appropriate funds to do the big grant application, Ed, as you, you know, suggested as a possibility for the bigger project. Appropriate the funds for the grant project, and then try to see if it's possible to appropriate the funds for the Phase II II work. So I bring nothing but bad news, I'm sure, but rather than talk about bad news, yeah.
$200,000 grant is good news.
Right.
It's not all bad.
I purposely wanted to kinda keep things relatively high-level tonight with the expectation that we could come back in a workshop forum with staff, whether it be during the day or another board meeting, and try to work through some of the details behind this so that folks can better understand all of the work that went into coming up with a page and a half of notes. Is Phil making any faces at me while he's sitting back there?
No.
Okay.
No, he's holding his breath.
All right.
So I'm just trying to understand, is the master plan completed or incomplete?
So we've sat at probably 90% complete for the last eight months, and, you know, kinda for two reasons is, first, a while back when Jeff had kinda been our liaison from the board for the workshop-type meetings, and then when Brian transitioned out and Eric came in, what we didn't wanna do is say, okay, Eric, here's the sandwich, go eat it. We wanted Eric to have an opportunity to step back with us and make sure that he was comfortable with the alternatives, the recommended plan. The reason we haven't finalized it is we don't wanna submit a report to D E P on your behalf that says this is our wastewater plan, because it may be, say, D P C engineering on it, but it's town of Hatfield's book, and you're stuck with whatever's in there. So it's very important that we collectively decide, you know, how do we best act as stewards? I mean, you are sewer commissioners, kinda in addition to the Board of Selectmen, so you have that charge in Hatfield. How do we come up with a plan that is effective, cost-effective, makes sense for the residents, and then we finalize it, becomes our collective words, and then we move on to implementation? So it sometimes happens. He did this to us in Northfield, too, when he left Northfield, so.
Our biggest thing is we have a lot of equipment down there that we know what we need to do to make it, bring it back up to 100% and running like new, but we don't wanna go ahead and spend money on things if we're gonna replace them. That it, you know, it's not, it's not, obviously not smart to, I mean, we can keep this stuff running, but you can only do that for so long before. But we just kind of, we, us as a staff, I'm pretty sure I can speak for Ken as well, is we're just kinda, we're kind of a rock in a hard place, whether we replace something or just patch it up so we can get through until we do something. And we just kinda-
Need some direction.
Some kinda timeframe that we know what we're aiming for. So we'll make it work either way, but, you know.
You know, the challenge is if you have an emergency repair that costs, something big fails and you spend $100,000 fixing something, you know, your debt service on a project is gonna be $40,000 per year, per million financed. So there's some strategy that goes into, do we continually budget? And I think the no-action alternative, if you decide to not move forward with a project, is you just have to really build up your reserve fund such that you have the rainy day funds that are, you know, more robust than you would if you had new equipment and things are under warranty and generally sustainable. So I always say, you know, no action is always an alternative. We just have to understand what the consequences with the decision are. So perhaps this evening, or at a later time, we can at least try to work towards a follow-up session, whether it be in this forum or a different one, to try to roll our sleeves up and work with some numbers and try to work towards some decisions. So thank you for the opportunity to be introduced to the rest of you and present this to the residents.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
You got it.
Nice meeting you. We'll see you again.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Very informative.
And if you ever have any questions, anything, please feel free to call and ask them. They're all week, so.
Marlene, can we get this on the, posted on the website? So if the residents wanna be able to look at this, they-
More if you wanna tour to see some of the equipment. More than welcome to come down.
I've seen it a couple times, yep.
Next topic will be planning board.
Oh, you just forwarded the key then. Thanks.
Hey, gentlemen, you wanna, you're here to make a recommendation, is that correct?
Yeah, so the planning board currently has one vacancy. Ron Sassi resigned from the board after he and Linda moved to Eastham, Massachusetts. And so we received one expression of interest for that position prior to the deadline for the posting of that position. We received a second expression of interest as well, which came in after that deadline. We actually just, we, just so the board is aware, we have another vacancy pending on the planning board, and that's pending a, receive an official resignation letter or some form of resignation from Rick Bertram, who as you know, no longer lives in Hatfield. So we've been working with Marlene, Wilma has been helping us with Marlene and with Lydia, the town clerk, to secure that official resignation letter so that that position can be posted, and then we can have an open period for anyone expressing interest in that position. So this other individual would be included in that group, and we've talked to some other people and have heard from some other folks that might be interested in that position when it becomes available. So the individual that we voted to advance to the pla- to the Board of Selectmen for, to fill the vacancy, the Ron Sassi vacancy, is Mike Pachek, who as you know is on the zoning board of appeals. We're not sure what his status will be if he were approved to fill this interim position on the planning board, what he would do in terms of his position on the zoning board of appeals, or he may approach you all and the town clerk to get dispensation, if you will, to serve on both boards. But that's up for him and you all to decide.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, well, I don't know if the-
So we voted, the three of us at our previous meeting voted, we had a quorum and voted to advance Michael Pachek to you all, so we, I guess, are making a motion to nominate Michael Pachek to fill the position previously held by Ron Sassi on the planning board, and maybe Marlene or Lydia can help me explain to the public how long that is and then what that individual has to do as far as running for themselves for the seat.
So the individual, correct me if I'm wrong, Lydia, will serve until the annual election in May. However, that individual, if they're interested in running for that position, then they would take out papers with the town clerk to run for office.
Okay, so they would be, they would hold the position on interim basis until the May town meetings, or May elections?
Correct.
When I got on, I had to come back and run, but I only ran for the term that remained from the person that I took over for. So it's a five-year position, but I only ran for three years to finish out-
So you finished out the balance of the term?
Right. I don't know what Ron Sassi is, I think he just ran.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think if Lydia's here-
I don't count.
Yeah, I think-
Fires in 2021.
2021, yeah, so that-
He pretty much gonna bite the bullet if you go in May, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, 'cause he did just run again a year ago, May, yeah.
Bob, I was just gonna ask, when you mentioned, I didn't know if, did you mean you're concerned there'd be a conflict, planning board, zoning board of appeals? Is that what you meant, or if there's not, or I wasn't sure if that's what you meant?
So without the-
We don't know.
Without the council, town council, we don't know, but we sort of, without legal background, the three of us did wonder if Michael was involved in a decision at the planning board that then, for whatever reason, went to the Z B A.
Correct.
He would have to recuse himself, and then that would be an issue in terms of perhaps having a quorum at the Z B A or needing to go to their alternate. So I just don't know how cumbersome or clunky that might be for Z B A, so.
I think the only decision that the Z B A is gonna meet on is the decision of the building inspector, an appeal of a building inspector's decision, an appeal of a planning board decision, I believe the next step is court, it's not the zoning board.
Well, that's true, Lydia, but I, we were just concerned that if it was a decision that, or if it was a building inspector decision on something that the planning board had acted on previously, and then there was-
And then there was a Z B A issue as well?
Yes, yeah, that they might, he might have, it would all likelihood have to recuse himself from having served on the planning board in that original decision, but.
So is that something we want a legal opinion on first, then, or?
No, because we don't, we actually don't know if Michael is gonna decide to just move off the Z B A. We sort of felt like this is an issue for the Z B A to address, so we wanted to address first getting someone to help us fill these positions, because the challenge that we have right now-
We don't have a-
Given that we, I mean, we have a quorum if the three of us show up. Our dear friend here is recovering, and so we wanna make sure that-
Yeah, they brought me in, but I'm Bay State tonight, under duress.
Yeah. From recent surgery, and so having another member would allow us to have just a regular quorum of three out of five. But we also have to have at least four of our members present when considering a special permit. That doesn't mean that all four of us have to vote for the special permit, but there need to be four of the five present in order for us to take an action on a special permit. So it's sort of a super quorum, if you will. And so right now, we wouldn't be able to consider any special permits with just three members.
So you're looking to get something done as soon as possible, guessing?
Yes, yeah.
I'll make a motion with the planning board's recommendation to appoint Mike Pachek to fill Ron Sassi's seat until the next town election in May 2019.
Motion made, and I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Right.
All in favor?
It's a roll call vote, so Moriarty, I.
Chorworski, I.
Dodie, I.
And you guys also have to-
Paul Abbi, I.
Paul Dostal, I.
Paul Abbi, I.
Bob Wagner, I.
While you're here, is there anything else you wanna say to the folks in town?
Yes, I would like to announce that on November 7th, there's gonna be a special town, not a special town, I mean, a planning board meeting to consider a company called Treeworks that is interested in establishing a marijuana manufacturing facility in the town of Hatfield. And they held a, under the Cannabis Control Commission, they're required to hold a community meeting with the community, which they held in August. And it was very disappointing to go to that meeting and only find that there were 10 or 12 people at it. So I just think that it's important that the residents are concerned, or are concerned enough to come out and listen to what's going on. We've had other public hearings, and then it goes to town floor, this is not gonna go, this is gonna be a special permit, the site plan approval and all that kind of stuff. But we've had other proposals in the past years that I've been on the planning board, and we've asked for public input, and then it goes to town floor. We have very, very few people that take an interest in a planning board meeting, or in a lot of other meetings as well. And then it goes to town floor, and people get up and they spend an hour, two hours, arguing over something that could have been done months ago, and it wastes a lot of time at the town meeting. So we would appreciate as much public input on this topic and many other topics as well. But special, planning board meetings, especially when you're doing a site plan approval, a special permit, it affects a lot of people, so I think it's important that the citizens know about these kinds of things.
Hey, thank you, and thank you for coming, and thank you, nice seeing you again, Paul. All right.
Doing good, doing good. It's a slow process, but doing good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, the next two topics, Marlene, indicate parking clerk resignation and assistant town clerk, so is, is the town clerk gonna discuss this, or is that, what is that with that?
The parking clerk, now, the recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen appoint the Sharon Strzegowski Assistant Treasure Collector Parking Clerk. As you know, the previous collector resigned, so we need to have a parking clerk designated. And that individual would be Sharon Strzegowski.
We just need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved? I mean, appoint Sharon as the parking clerk?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Okay, assistant town clerk.
The assistant town clerk, Eileen Dostal, has given her resignation, and she's worked here several years, how many years, Lydia?
Probably at least four. Came in, you know, and she was always doing a little bit of work on the computer and for hours just, we expanded them.
Good idea to turn the lights on back there.
No, it's okay. So yeah, she's been here for, I think, at least four years, four years of the five that I've been here, and she's been a tremendous help and always willing to jump in when, you know, I can't be here or have to go for a conference or something, so.
Well, I'd like to make sure we send her a thank you letter for her years of service and you're presently advertising for another position?
I am, it was all posted today, going into the Gazette. I already have one person interested, and that was, that was very quick, so.
All right, we'll move to topic four, Real Folk Society Election Day Bake Sale Request. I don't see any issues with that, if they've been doing it for years, so I'll make a motion to approve the Real Folk Society Election Day Bake Sale Request. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Just to clarify, that's for Election Day, just in case people, in case people didn't realize that. So it's for November 6th, so.
That's correct. And I'm just gonna abstain from that, 'cause I'm involved in it, I'm involved in that, so I'll abstain from that, okay?
Okay, motion made, seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, one-day liquor license for Hatfield Fireman's Association for the bonfire. It's always been approved in the past, and I don't see any issues with not approving it, so is any discussion?
Make a motion to approve the application for the one-day liquor license on October 13th and waive the $75 application fee.
Okay, motion made, and I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll move to topic six, D P W Director's Report.
Thank you, Chairman. It's been a few months, I think, so there's been a lot going on. One of the couple of the biggest things that's happened is that we worked the last- we worked the last month, good month or so, on the MS4 small stormwater permit. We finalized it, sent it to DEP, so as I said, in an email that I shared with most of you, that they'll be coming back with, I'm sure, some comments about it, but it's, it's changed. The stormwater permit has changed, so there's a few things that we might have to do once they get ahold of it, uh, but I'm sure it's not a lot of cost, it's mostly mapping. We've started the mapping process, so, you know, with the culverts, and then sometimes they make you tag all the catch basins, you know, not to put oil, and, um, I mean, all the big communities have already done it, but now they're getting around to the smaller communities, but we'll wait and see. So that was filed a couple weeks ago. And the other thing we had to have with DEP was a third party inspection at the transfer station. We've used Huntley Associates in the past, so they're very familiar with the site, and we've always had no issue, so we've done that. We had the third party inspection, Jeff Futz from Hatfield is one of the people on Huntley's staff that goes up there, so he toured the facility, wrote the report, we worked together on a few issues, and that was filed also, so that's in their hands for comments, but we shouldn't have any problems with that. Uh, there was a few questions about the water sewer billing, it's committed, Sharon printed the bills, they're going, they were stuffing the envelopes today, and the due date is 11/14.
Correct.
11/14, so November 14th, the water and sewer bills will be due. As you know, there was a break on Main Street down past Jeff Boyle's house. The pipe, I think it lived its expectancy, the stamp on the pipe was 1896, so that's when that pipe was put in the ground and manufactured. So now when we have pipes as that, like in that case, or anywhere around town, if there's a long distance between shut off valves, we install, we try to install a new shut off valve, if we can get the parts to do it, and fortunately enough, we had, we could have, we got the parts and we installed the shut off valve there. So if there's another break within that valve and the next valve, we'll have that, we'll have the capacity to shut it off and not to disrupt more residents that are need to be. So that, you know, that's one of our goals that we tried to do, and it, it worked out there, so that's a good thing. All the trenches will be patched this coming week or next week, depending on the weather. I mean, we've, we see so much rain that, you know, we've been bogged down really bad with the rain situations, trying to get our friendly beavers out of the culvert pipes and other issues that are going on around town with the water. But anyways, things are going good, we're getting ready for winter, unfortunately. That's a bad word to say when me and Marlene look at each other, and I've mentioned winter. But, you know, we're starting to get all the equipment ready, so we should be good. There's not too much to fix, but we always check everything before the winter months.
Okay, you got Straits Road is done and tested.
Straits Road has been done, it's been camered, uh, the only thing left is to build the inverts, and I'm trying to get a contractor in, or even would my me do it in-house to do the inverts. There's three inverts that have to be built in manholes, but otherwise, yes, you can hook into the sewer on Straits Road, it's up, it's ready to go. What else?
And you have to put a new roof on the transfer station.
Transfer station shed was roofed, that was done in-house, you know, we had the metal, we did it this, this week? It was last week, we did it last week. We tested it, we sprayed the hose on, there's no leak, so we will be fixing the ceiling inside, half the sheet came down, so we'll be putting a piece of sheet rock in there and taking it for fire protection. Uh, there's been a couple questions about the feasibility study. I just wanna touch base on that a little bit, that the money was approved to do a feasibility study downstairs. Some people had some different opinions of what that was for, uh, it's for the required space within the building. So, our discussion that we've had with, you know, the town administrator and the chairman and the board is that it really makes no sense to do the feasibility study until we know the exact space that's gonna be occupied by the Phase 2 project. We really don't know until the final plan is developed and set in stone what we're gonna do, how much of that kitchen is gonna be taken, are they gonna need any other space? Are they not gonna need any space, 'cause that may all change with the ramp, the no ramp, I, I really don't know. So, once that's complete, you know, we surely get them on board to do the feasibility study for the downstairs. I think it's a long time coming to see what their needs are, and we surely wanna address that.
Uh, Smith Academy playing fields, there was some changes made after you guys started the field. They wanted to put in some dugouts or something, that's sort of a-
Yeah, so, yeah, there were some questions around town about that as well, about the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission, we had three meetings with the Conservation about the initial field hockey field, which was approved, it was sent to the state, so that project's approved. Then, in the meantime, after that, the Booster Club, along with a couple of student parents, came to me and said, we'd like to build two dugouts on the softball fields. So, one, of course, one of the field, one of the softball dugouts would be in the buffer zone at a wetland. So we're going to the Conservation Commission on Thursday with that project. So the two, them two projects are totally separate. But the field hockey field is going along good, it's gonna be coming under budget, you know, what was initially estimated, so. We hope that the rough, I mean, the final grading we've done this week, pending the weather again, I mean, we've had two weeks of, we couldn't get out there because of the rain. Once that's complete, we will be doing the fine grading, the irrigation, and then they're gonna sod it, sod it, so it should be playable next season, if everything goes right, as long as we don't get any more rain.
All right, and then?
No.
Any question?
Not on those specific ones, no. I have other stuff, but I'll wait on that. Are we gonna have quarterly meetings, you talked about, when did the yearly reviews have quarterly meetings for communication purposes? With the different department heads, are we gonna do that? 'Cause I'd rather wait for that, if, you know, and not bring up other stuff tonight.
All right, I mean, I, I mean, the liaisons meet with their departments, I'm assuming, I, I meet with my departments regularly, and-
So do I, but, um, we had talked about that at, at contract time, and at evaluation time, you said that we should meet with all the department heads quarterly, so there's no issues, that they say there's not communication or whatever, so I wondered if you were gonna do that, or, 'cause I'd rather wait, and-
All right, maybe we can put something on the-
'Cause it's not specific to these topics, you know?
Agenda for the next meeting, and we can discuss how we wanna approach that. How's that sound? Okay.
I think that's a good idea, you know, let the department heads know, you know, from the three of us.
Yeah, we'll figure out how we wanna do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Phil publicly for taking the lead on that field hockey field. Done a lot of work working with the superintendent and saved the town and the schools a lot of money by taking on a lot of those responsibilities, so.
Yeah, I think it'll be beautiful.
It's gonna be great.
You know, I mean, I think it's gonna be, you know, an irrigated field that's, you know, gonna-
At the school.
It's gonna stand out, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
How are you guys set up for winter? I know it's, it's already October, so I gotta ask that question. Is, are you whacking anything that you need, or?
I don't think so, I mean, we're pretty much, last, last winter, we were able to buy a sidewalk snowplow. We have the blower, but as you know, that, you know, when that snow gets heavy, you can't move it with that blower. So we were able to purchase a small sidewalk plow that had to be redone to fit our sidewalks, and we did that in-house, Don did a great job, he cut it off, you know, made it a little bit shorter, welded it, painted, you'll never, you never even know, you think it's brand new, so, you know, I'm, I'm glad we have him in-house.
I think the issue last year was like a freak thing where the, the sidewalks all got icy, and you had to wait till the sun come out to, you just couldn't, I mean-
Like I said, the, the snow blower won't pick up the slush, it's just like in your driveway, if it's real slushy, it's not gonna throw it, so, you know. And we also have purchased a sidewalk salt, sand salt or so, we can do that as well if we need to. Hopefully, they won't, hopefully it won't snow, but.
But I mean, you have that now where we-
Yes, yes, we do.
That'll take care of that issue.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, and the trucks are in good shape, also with the plows, the sanders, yeah, we're okay.
And I think we had an update from Tony on the water testing at the well, there was some kind of issue with the-
Yes, I think, did he, he emailed, did he email the whole board? I think he sent, sent the whole board the email today, yes, so, I mean, all the, all the numbers are way below limits again, you know?
One's close, I think, and that was it.
The one that was close, you know, I mean, it's close, but the other one, like I said, you know, we keep arguing that we had a bad sample, you know, we keep arguing with them about it, and, you know, DEP's DEP, they're gonna mandate to do certain things, so we're following their rules by far, and-
So how many tests does it take before they'll, they'll believe it was a bad sample?
That's a good question, that's what we keep asking, when can we reopen the well? You know, but they won't give us that answer, they, they just said, you gotta keep testing. So I'm sure once they get, you know, enough of data, they'll say, well, maybe it was a bad sample, because surely everything's been under, except for that one, you know?
All right. I thank you for the update, I think it's, it's nice that you come forward and, you know, give the town an update on what's happening, 'cause-
Sure, and I'm glad to do that, you know?
It's good to, it's good to dispel rumors and get the facts out, so everybody's aware of what's happening.
I'd like to just mention something, Phil, do we not talk with the board just briefly regarding the Prospect Court pedestrian bridge project?
I could, yes, so, I mean, that was a discussion we had, Bob Wagner left today. So there was two projects in CPA, one was for the tree planting, that there's funding still available, so. This week, we're gonna plant six trees under their program. We had residents come out and ask for trees, and they're in the right district, so we're gonna give them the trees. And then, while we're on that subject, Open Space had approached me about the park, because during the park project, they had to cut some trees out of the park project due to the fact of the funding. So they came to me and asked if we could plant it under the CPA grant money, and I have no problem with doing that. I already tie, I already spoke to Bob Wagner and Mark Gelat about it, so they're thrilled that, you know, they had gonna have the ability to plant the trees that were supposed to be planted over there. And the other, the other project was the Prospect Court Bridge Project that was in the CPA. Marlene and I went, worked diligently on the bid process when, uh, when it was, when it was opened, it was-
It's tripled.
Yeah, it was tripled of the estimate, it was triple the estimate. So there's still funding left in CPA for $148,000 for that Prospect Court Bridge Project. Of course, it's not enough, but I, they had asked me, dude, we, do, does the, does the town want us to release the money of CPA's, the CPA money for that project, and I said, no, let's keep it in place, because hopefully, maybe we can bring it back to the table and get some hard numbers.
Well, we've invested some, some money already in work on that project.
Engineering, engineering costs, underwater survey cost, I mean, it was $42,000 or something for the investment.
And a couple of residents have come into Town Hall and asked me about that, and I, I think it's, it's worth pursuing. We just need to put a plan together and present it to the Board of Selectmen.
Right, you know, I mean, it would be a capital project, but, I mean, you have probably half of the funds, or a good third of the funds there, available through the CPA.
So we know the work that needs to be done, we just, all the costs need to be updated.
Updated, correct, yeah, and I think that would be short money to have that done, have to update, update the project cost. I don't, well-
Maybe miraculously, something's changed and the price will be lower. I mean, I think we were all shocked that it came in as high as it, I mean, three times the initial estimate was, I mean, that, that was a big jump.
Yes.
Big jump.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, especially after all the survey work was done, and underwater survey, and everything was out there estimated.
Yep.
And it wasn't even close, it was not even close. And the other thing is Gila Hurr's contract should be available at the end of this week, next week for sure, for signing by the board for the water project, for the second phase of the water transmission main, so.
Where, where's that second phase at now?
It's going, it's gonna, the contract has been awarded to Gila Hurr, but they're just signing the documents. It's going from Brockway and Smith where they ended it, over to Mill River to Lake Gore Avenue.
Okay, talking about projects, I, I saw something from DOT for posting of weights on the bridge, certain bridges. Is, is that something they do, or is that something we do?
Yes, it is, DOT is- DOT inspected the Maple Street Bridge.
I have the report on my desk, it came in today.
Their recommendation was to post it, so, to have it posted for weight. So the nice guy that I am, I asked him, well, who's paying for the posting signs? Who's gonna make up the signs to post that bridge? And they came back and said, well, we'll make the signs, so we have five signs that they delivered last, the beginning of this week to the town garage, so we just have to put them up, but they made the signs, so.
Okay. So they paid for the-
Yes, they, they paid for the signs.
Nice.
Yes, yes.
I don't have any more questions.
And while we're on the Mass DOT license here, I know that, you know, she was involved with the, uh, the bus stop down on Route 5.
There's some new information on that one. I was gonna ask for the-
So, so my, I, my, my conversation said that I would go to DOT and ask if there's any plans. There's no plan for them to redo that road.
That's too bad.
So they said, you know, seven years out, it's not gonna get done.
And there's a lot of new stuff that came up on that, I don't, it's not looking good, so.
No.
I haven't gotten a chance to talk to you about it, so.
So, I mean, they have no plans, they surely, they said you could file something under, you know, the, uh, one of their programs, but-
Well, there is that grant that I had researched, and I think maybe we should, the next round is in May.
Yeah, I mean, we can surely apply, but whether they'll-
That's for the sidewalks and the curb.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot of it's gonna be put off, so maybe by the time it comes to fruition, maybe they will be doing the road, is what I'm looking at, I mean, it's- Really? Yeah. So they're tabling that project? Not exactly, um, but it, it has to do with the landowners on both sides. Oh.
I hear you.
I'll, they'll bring that up to you, and then we can bring it to, you know, to the open meeting here, once, um, everybody knows what's going on. Okay.
Yeah, because it's not just an installation of the bus stop, you know, it's sidewalks along that corridor, so, I mean, I think that's what, you know, people are gonna balk at.
You have anything else for us tonight?
We're waiting, you know, we applied for the Mass Works Grant for, you know, the Route 5 corridor, for the sewer to be extended from RK miles to the new Steeble project down on, down to Chestnut Street. It's usually October that they award the grant, so we applied for 1.8 million, we'll see how it goes.
We should be hearing soon, right, one way or the other, they said they're gonna notify us whether we-
Yes, you either get the award or you get the poison letter, it's one or the two, so, but you will get notified. You know, we worked hard and, you know, and we were involved, we had all the players in the room, it's just a matter of, is it the right number?
I, I, I mean, I feel everybody bent over backwards to try to make that grant possible, and-
Did everything we could.
Done everything they could to try to hope that we can get that grant, 'cause that's, that would be important for this town.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if, if it ever did happen, you know, it's not just that project, it'll be other projects along that corridor that could open up and, you know, support the sewer system. As you heard, you know, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to have more users, so.
Okay, well, let's hope for the best, it's still-
It's all we can do, we gave it our best try.
Are you heading out?
I was going to.
Oh, no, okay, I, I just update you on the bus stuff, but I can-
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can get together, I mean, I, I've heard that too, you know, I've heard rumors about the whole bus station stuff.
I, I, um, yeah, one of the landowners came up, showed up.
Yeah.
Down on the doorstep, more or less, yeah.
But it's not the only property in the corridor that, I mean, there's others that would accept it, a location.
Well, yeah, no, maybe not, no, this is the third no, so.
Yeah.
This is the third no, we're just, we're good zero prospects right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
The board will just need to vote to commit the 560,106.95 for water and sewer. You have that?
Yes. Should I read this whole thing?
No, it's not necessary. No, it's not necessary.
So, total committed for collection would be 560,106.95.
Correct.
Which would cover water sewer, right? So...
Yes.
Do you need a motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
You have a second?
Motion made, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay, topic seven, Town Administrator Report. But topic seven, the first thing is Chapter 61A, land off of Cronin Hill Road. And the way I understand 61A, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is when somebody has land in 61A and they wanna take it out of 61A to, to make a house or something on that property, the town has first divvy of purchasing that if they can negotiate a price with the owner. But if the town does not want it, then it can go back to the owner. And then, I believe it's five years of back taxes are paid on that land. That's my understanding of 61A. And as far as Cronin Hill Road, my understanding is the, the planning board has recommended not purchasing this property.
Correct.
So...
They do not see any valuable use to the town for that.
So, it'd be basically for this, it'd be a motion to accept this change, correct?
To, to waive the town's right.
I'll make a motion to not exercise the town's right, a first refusal for the land off of Cronin Hill Road as presented tonight.
Have motion made, motion, I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, topic eight. I'll give it to you, Marlene, for an update on House Bill Number 4878, which is the Hatfield Liquor License, which was requested and sent, sent to the House for review.
Right, thank you. So, as you know, the, the town filed a legislation language to petition the legislature to expand or increase off-premises all alcohol license for, for the town of Hatfield. And John Seibach, Senator John, John Seibach filed that on the town's behalf. And we had received notification, the legislature in reviewing that added some additional language. So, I'm asking if the board will vote to accept the House Bill as presented in your packet.
Move to accept the House Bill as presented?
House Bill 4878.
4878, yeah, House Bill 4878.
You have a second there?
Motion made, motion second. Any discussion?
Just like to thank Representative Seibach and, and Diana Zinal for their assistance in getting this through. I have no other comments other than that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Capital Planning, 2020. Let's see, Brian's on the committee, so...
Yep.
So, the, all the documents have, have been distributed to the departments. I'm in the process of coordinating some meeting dates for the Capital Planning Committee to, to meet in November. So, I just wanted to let the board know that all the material has been distributed.
Thank you. And we'll make sure to get with Sharon and Edwina in advance of our meetings to find out the debt and what's coming, you know, what's coming up, what's coming off, that type of thing.
I had a conversation with Edwina last week, yes. So, it would be helpful to have a, a meeting with, with her as well. Matter of fact, I had suggested to Edwina when we talked last week that perhaps at our meeting on November 7th between the Finance Committee Selectman Justin Cole, that perhaps that would be a good time to have that discussion so that when the Capital Planning meets, they have that information. Can, so can we go back to topic nine? Can we take that up?
Yeah, we can go to topic nine. I missed that one. Go ahead.
Just, actually, this is just, you know, I guess for, for clarification purposes and to notify the town clerk. There is a Human Resources Advisory Committee. And the town clerk had just notified me that there's a vacancy. Sandy Beldon had served on that committee. And when she notified me, I had, for some reason, thought that that committee had been dissolved. But then I realized, no, it hasn't been. So, I wanted to, in, in letting the board know about this vacancy, do we, does the board still want to keep that committee active? I know that Finance Committee Chair Darryl Williams in the past has said that departments, the whole idea of having this committee is if a department wants to create a new position or look at a job description, change it, that, that committee would review those requests and then recommend to the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen.
I thought originally, and I could be wrong, I thought originally that committee was charged with actually putting together the HR policy for the town. I mean, I know they, you know, back five or six years ago, I, I mean, you know, with Jeff, and I know Colleen Adamsky and Fran Gutten and Darryl and Sandy, you know. But I think they kinda got the whole thing, redid the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
So, so I guess my question would be, do they, do you know? Do they continue to meet for any reason?
I'm not aware that they've had a meeting. The town clerk might, so I know originally Louise Slush, when she was town clerk, myself and Jeff Boyle, developed the HR policies. And so, then the, this committee at a later time reviewed them and updated them.
Correct, and they, and made recommendations, I think, as far as pay scales and beginnings, salaries, and, you know, that type of thing.
Yes, I knew, I knew that day.
So, I, I guess I didn't realize they were still an active committee from the perspective of...
Well...
Yeah.
There haven't been any meetings posted, I think, in the five years I've been here.
Yeah.
I believe, but don't quote me, that the last couple of annual appointments never came in to be sworn in.
Right.
So, it's...
What the question then becomes?
The question, yes.
Is it a committee that we any longer need?
I did speak to a couple of them, and yes, they were interested. They did set up the job descriptions. They were the ones that wanted to be notified if there was a change in job description. And I had asked a member if they were still active. And they said, well, we're still on the committee, but they felt the Board of Selectmen did not listen to them at all and were concerned they were wasting their time. So, I don't know, you know, because they felt they weren't consulted or they, that the board was not following their suggestions, that it was acting on its own.
Well, let's all sleep on this and think about it and see if...
Okay, sure, see if anyone still wants to be active.
I was, I was just gonna say, why don't we reach out to the current members and see what their think, what their feelings are, what they're thinking is, is what they should be doing or not be doing.
I did, yeah.
You know, so, and then they can respond, and maybe we can take it from there. I mean, I'm certainly not against having a committee that wants to, you know, review those types of things, HR policies, et cetera. But I mean, we've been doing it for the last six months, going section by section. So, is that something that committee really should have been doing? Or, I, I mean, or, or with us, like when we meet with finance, you know, so... Yeah, I think we just need to clarify everything, that's all.
Well, as I said, when, when the town clerk mentioned to me that Sandy Beldon...
Yeah.
And I thought, geez, does that committee, you know, still exist?
Right.
So, all right.
We, we do know who the current members are, though. So, yeah, maybe we can reach out to them in one fashion and say, what, what are you, what are your feelings on this? Okay.
All right. So, that'll bring us to topic 11. I think you sort of brought it up a little bit on the Community Preservation Project Application Deadline.
And that is a new deadline. When I say new compared to previous years, I believe it used to be December 1st. And so, they have moved it up to November 1st.
So, so this is for anybody in town who wants to go and request CPA funding?
Correct.
Has got to make that request to the CPA Committee by November 1st?
Correct, and departments have been notified.
Okay.
And I also bring it up to the board if there are capital projects that we want to look at submitting to the Capital Planning Committee. For example, the, when we were just talking with Phil regarding the Prospect Court Pedestrian Bridge, I, I know that there are community preservation funds. Maybe we, we think about approaching the Community Preservation Committee for additional funds for that project.
Can we have a, we still have, we can have one more meeting before November 1st?
Yes.
Okay, so we can now digest this and maybe think about what we want to present?
Yeah, I, I, I would suggest that maybe...
Or any other projects?
Right, having a conversation with, with Phil since that department probably is looking for the larger capital type things because we've gotta have it to CPA in three weeks. November 1st, two weeks, two and a half weeks, whatever it is, so, rather than wait.
It takes quite a while to put one of those applications together.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's depending on the type of project.
Right, but if you've already applied once already, you should have your original application
Just change some...
And be, right, be able to, it might be a little quicker, but it's still, it's a lot to put together.
Okay, we'll put that on the, on the next meeting.
We'll move to topic 12, Town Hall Renovation Update. Marlene, you have something for us?
So, you have in your packet a, a letter from the architect, Kevin Rothschild Shea, and that was in response to a, a letter the town sent to him asking, inquiring about the progress of Phase 2. And so, he did confirm in his letter that the Architectural Access Board will hold a hearing on October 15th, at which time they will take up the town's request to extend the waiver that was granted. As you know, September 1st, we're supposed to have the elevator operating. And so, he's, he's continuing to work with the engineer on the scope of the project. And they had also recommended a water flow test out here on School Street. As you know, one of the costs that increased the overall project was having to have a... I was trying to think of what that's called, a pump, yeah, what a pump. So, that test was held last week. I have not received the results of that, and I don't believe Phil has either. So, as soon as we have that information... So, at, at this time, you know, we were talking about putting, rebidding the project in the fall. I don't see that happening, although the architect doesn't say that. That's just my opinion.
We did have some conversation on where to cut the project with the architect, and, and there was a couple ideas presented. So, I'm not sure if they want to back out to bid.
No, they haven't.
And whether, I think they're supposed to get back to us to see if they can get down on the project. If not, then we might have to then consider, you know, asking for additional money. I know it doesn't sound good, and nobody likes to hear it, but in order to handicap this building and bring it up to fire codes and fire protection, it might be something we have to entertain. That's the bottom line.
Yeah. And again, as he said, that, you know, when, when this project was scoped out, it was in 2016, I believe. So, the prices have increased since then.
So, hopefully, we have a better update after the 16th of where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay, topic 13, HR Policy Review.
I apologize, I am not prepared for that. I haven't had a chance to finish reviewing Section 15.
We'll move that to the next meeting. Topic 14, IT RFP Update.
IT, so those responses were due today. And actually, I received responses from three different companies, and I'm presently reviewing them. And, you know, the RFP indicated that we would be, the board would be awarding if there is a proposal or response in the best interest of the town sometime later in November. Because, you know, I'll be on vacation next week, and then I'll finish reviewing those and put something together.
Topic 15, Town Council Services RFP Update.
The RFP was put out, advertised, and I've heard from a few, just actually, maybe three legal firms. Those responses are due the end of this week on, on the 12th. And I will, as soon as I receive those, I will have copies made and distributed to the board to review.
Under Old Business, the last meeting, we had requested all the department heads to acknowledge that the people that work for them had looked at and reviewed the vehicle use policy and, and acknowledged that. Has, has that been accomplished by all departments?
No, there's still some departments that have not responded.
Can you please let us know from those departments at our next meeting why they haven't responded?
Which ones are?
There's still a fire department and wastewater. Like I said, the wastewater treatment... Okay, possibly wastewater treatment plant employees and the fire department.
Okay.
Not heard from.
Can find out why they haven't...
Right, and the part-time police officers, right. So, the full-time officers, we, we've received, a part-time officer, depends on their schedule and...
I mean, anybody that works for the town is supposed to at least look at the HR policy.
Correct.
So, we just want to ensure everybody knows how the, the town vehicle use policy is. And I believe we wanted them all to acknowledge it at the last meeting.
Yep.
And that's something we want to know what's happening with. Well, I'm very concerned about it, so.
Sure. Are there, well, you're talking about, you know, knowing the policy and not abusing it, et cetera. But are there any consequences if it is abused? Because I don't think there's anything that has any consequence to it.
Well, this, this item right now is just to make sure they've read the policy and understands it.
Because I saw that you had changed, or you had approved it last week when I watched the meeting, yeah. So, I wanted to know if there was anything in there that changed as to, you know, if you don't follow policies.
Well, if you're not following the policy, I think under the HR policy, there is a method of, of discipline, right? You, the HR policy has disciplined procedures if somebody's not following the policy, correct?
Right, if somebody's not performing, well, there is disciplinary action.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in the booklet.
We're talking about for lack of responding to...
No.
To a personnel policy that was distributed?
Not responding, just if, you know, failure to conform to it.
Oh, confirm to, confirm to the policy. Yes, there are disciplinary steps in the HR policy, yeah.
For anything that...
Actually, I think it's, there's three steps.
I didn't see anything, oh, okay.
I think there's a verbal, a written, and then...
Possible suspension or loss of payment. Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Unanticipated new business, I'm gonna give this to you to review and see. We need legal to look at that for us because we just got that dropped on us today.
Your microphone fell off.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, what you were just handed at the beginning of the meeting, okay.
Okay. That's all I have on unanticipated new business.
Would this be unanticipated, would this be appropriate time to ask for something to be put on the agenda for next time, just that Franklin County Transit stuff? If we could put that on for the next agenda? And after I talk to Phil and Marlene about it, you know, then I'll have more to explain.
All right.
If that's the right, thanks. Because they may have more information, because I know sometimes I contact Marlene.
Okay. I guess, ready to go into executive session?
Yep, I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 218, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and not return into public session. public body, and the chair so declares, and not return into public session tonight.
And that's a real call vote?
Or you're the aye?
Jaworski, aye?
Joe, the aye.
Thanks, John.